Good evening, everybody. This is the Dayton Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting, Wednesday, September 27th, 2017. This meeting is being recorded. Hopefully, it's showing live, but we're having some technical difficulties. In any case, it's recorded and will be shown on Channel 5 throughout the week. So, let's begin with our pledge of allegiance.
My prayers are to the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic for its strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to mention the passing of a number of town residents. Estacar, well-known lady in town. Her husband, she and her husband lived on the corner of Main and Somus County Street, Main and County, and there was cars trekking there when I first came to town. Mary Caton, the wife of Sergeant Anton Caton, who served on the Dayton Police Department for a number of years. Mary Matos. Sheila O'Brien, mother of Cahal O'Brien, who was the superintendent of the Dayton Water District. And I wanted to remember Sister Camilla, who resided at the Noviciate on Elm Street, who passed away and will be buried tomorrow. If we could have a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
And our condolences go out to all families. Okay, public input.
May I stay sitting?
Just tell us your name and your address.
Yes, definitely. My name is Jean Yell. I live at Chase Street in North Dayton. We've lived in Dayton since nineteen seventy-two. But I have an aside. I met my, this will not be long, I promise. I met my husband in St. Louis when we were in school. And my mother had passed away when I was six months old, but I had her genealogy. And the name was Reed, so I've traced it. And that was, what was the year, honey? Sixteen thirty-nine. So, I'm part of Dayton. In fact, my grandfather, direct grandfather, is buried up on Bering Hill, which is wonderful for me, because I do feel like I'm here. And I love this town. I absolutely love it. The year after we moved here, we bought the cornfield behind us, eighteen acres. And we had two of these separately, eight years each, and they had the full run of the cornfield. This is Cassie. Could you, would you mind just reading that?
Absolutely. It's a picture of a really cute dog. And it says, "Cassie, if love could have saved you, you would have lived forever." Beautiful.
And she was a Australian shepherd.
Australian shepherd. The dog that was shot is an Australian cattle dog. They're both extremely bright, but it doesn't matter, because people love their dog, no way it matters what. Because dogs are dogs. And I did find out that there are seven, eight, eight, nine is the population of Dayton. And there are eight hundred and forty-five dogs. And this dog was shot, we still don't know how or who. It's a crime. I think that my daughter says five thousand dollar crime in Massachusetts, if you shoot a dog. And the issue is that Ed Ferry rents the land from us for his corn, for his dairy farm. My grandparents, my mother's family, had a dairy farm in Champagne, Urbana, Illinois. And I know how these people work. They go to bed when the sun goes down, and they get up when the sun comes up. They're devoted people, and we want to protect that field. And when the corn comes down in the fall, we're out there. Now, I'm not comfortable with the thought that someone would have a gun out there. Also, I don't think people in this town know. I think it should be in the paper, or something.
I was, I was actually not aware. I was about to ask you what had happened.
It wasn't her. It wasn't her that was shot.
Well, I'd ask Chief McDonald to come and just kind of explain where, I know it's under, still under investigation, so there's some limits to what he can tell us, but maybe he just give an overview of what happened and what you.
Good evening. Mrs. Yell, you are correct. You've been in this town a long time. I know you have. You've lived here just about all your life, and I know you think highly of the town of Dayton. And we appreciate that, and Dayton is a good town. This incident that happened, it happened back in August 20th. And I have a report here. What I'll do is, if you don't mind, if I read the report, that the officers that were on the call, that way you guys can be aware of it. Okay? The officer who went on the call was Patrolman Chris McGann. On Sunday, August 20th, 2017, Patrolman Chris McGann was assigned to Work Uniform Patrol in Mark Cruzer on midnight to eight. That morning, upon arriving my shift, I was advised by Detective Ryan Richards that a party had reported by telephone that the dog had been shot. And he was taking the dog to the emergency room in Swansea. Later that morning, I was contacted by Dr. Thomas of Practice to inform me that he attempted surgery, but the damage was too extensive in the animal's zip. A one-year Australian cattle dog had died. The vet told me that they recovered a bullet fragment from the animal, and had also taken photos from the event. I was told that the dispatcher notified the ACO, but at this point, Steve Pack, the owner of the dog, had not been into reporting yet. On Tuesday, August 22nd, I was assigned to working from patrol on the day shift. On this date, he spoke to ACO Stacy Ferry, who went by the resident and spoke to the family. They told her that they intended on coming later in the day to report the matter, as they had not realized they needed to come in. Later, around 2:00 PM, I stopped by the residence to speak with them and gather more information of what had transpired when it happened with regards to the dog being shot. Steve and his wife said that they were out in the yard Saturday evening, probably around 6:30. They were out with the dog, and then he went off. And sometimes he does, and probably was gone for like fifteen to twenty minutes. They stated they heard something that probably sounded like a gunshot. Didn't know where the gunshot came from, but nothing at the time it came about. They said about five minutes later, the dog came through to the home in hurry, and it was clearly been shot. Steve, they said, his friend and I went over, watched the newborn child while they rushed the dog to the vet. Initially, they and the vet believed that the dog had been only struck in the leg, but upon vet, during surge, they discovered the dog's adden had been struck. It was only later that Stephen, they thought, it would realize that he heard that it was probably a gunshot. They indicated it sounded like it came from the southwest of their home, in the cornfield. But they stated, they could not be sure where the direction came from. They stated that they knew, I'm sorry, they stated that they know there were many people who walked back there and even hunt. When their dog was shot, it was still daylight, so it seemed unlikely a shooter mistook the dog for a coyote. They stated that in nine, in the year, nine days, they owned the dog and never had any issues with the dog interacting with neighbors. They did not know the dog to be harass neighbors or harass animals. They did not know the neighbors have any livestock that the dog may have been harassing. The dog was playful, a goofy attitude, but was very intelligent. Having heard from the vet, recovered from the dog, he had to be from a gun, a handgun. They summarized that the dog may have approached someone going for a walk through the woods or the field and startled them. So, I mean, in this report, it's actually not completed. The report is completed, but the investigation is still going on. And what we're trying to do is, if we, if things come up, you don't know, could find out what happened, who did it. I know they talked to a few people there. I checked today about, like you mentioned, you walk in the cornfield when the corn is down. I checked with the dispatcher, just to make sure, to see if any calls we've had in there for anything lately. About a couple of months ago, there was a call, someone dumped trash in that roadway that goes in off of School Street. And then I asked them about any other thing, and they said it has been months that you might get four-wheelers down there, you get kids in there doing that. But I have to say that, you know, and I know you guys, there's your land, you want to walk back there, you don't want to feel in fear. I don't think it'll be dangerous back there. I mean, it's not like we have had situations like this. This is, this is an awful thing. I have to say, this is, this is terrible. Whoever did this, like I said, we didn't get any calls about the gunshot. The dog came back to the house. So, if it was shot in the cornfield, if it was shot in the woods, we don't know that. But as far as you walking in, I don't think you really have fear. I know you, you know that woods, the back of your head, because, you know, so the guys have done a good job, they're still looking into it. Detective Richards is still looking into this. He won't stop till, if he does find somebody. We get leads, we will go further on it, and prosecution will be done if we do find the person who did it.
I think one thing you said, if it was, if he was shot with a handgun, it wasn't like a long ways away. It wasn't fifty yards or a hundred yards away. It would have been somebody pretty close.
Yeah.
Unless you're a real marksman, but.
Do you think it was a handgun?
Well, we don't know. It says in the report they had handgun, but they said it could have been a twenty, a twenty-two.
Okay, yeah.
So, they don't know. But, you know, and in this situation, yeah, this is terrible, if people do this, I mean, you know, and we don't know, like, he doesn't know, and he put in there, was he chasing livestock? Was it a coy, a person who did this think it was a coyote? We don't know.
But even though.
Right.
I don't think you'll have any fear if you walking in there. I mean, and believe me, if you hear something, you see somebody, please call.
You know that we will.
Oh, I know, I know, I know. Yeah, but please call. If you, anything you see in there, if people, even someone walking in there, call us. Maybe they're not supposed to be in there.
We've always had a very good response from the police, always. We've never had an issue. And that's not my issue. It's just that I, I know most people, like I gave you, there are eight hundred and forty-five dogs in this town. If anyone's dog was shot, I think they'd be like, "I'll be here."
I know, you feel, the dog getting shot, that's your issue, yeah. That's terrible.
But it's a terrible thing, and why anybody would shoot a dog is beyond my comprehension, and, you know, so hopefully, something will turn up, so they can.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then, anything you need, just you call, please. Okay?
We appreciate you coming and bringing the.
I know I can do it. I did it years ago.
For fun.
I guess we're there, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Do you currently have a dog?
Pardon me?
Do you currently have a dog?
No, we lost this one. Did you see the picture?
Yes, I saw the picture.
Five years ago, we lost her, and I was, we were so foolish. She went and got another one. We had her a week. Well, I'm going to be eighty, and I, it's like having a newborn. They're wonderful. I can't tell how many times I've gone, "Let me get another one," but it's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And when you're a certain age, you just can't. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
We're always here, Wednesday night, you know where to find us.
Pardon me?
You know where to find us on Wednesday nights.
Okay, let's move along to old business, status of the fire chief interviews. We have interviewed five potential candidates for fire chief, and we're trying to narrow the number down to bring in for final interviews. So, what we had just done last week, we all independently gave Karen three names, three of the five names that we thought might be, we might want to bring in for a final interview. As it turns out, we had three votes for one and two votes for three others, so that's four people, which.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Just so everybody watching, we did have a reminder about the open meeting walk. What we did was, we sent our three selections privately and individually to Karen. I don't know who Mr. Taylor chose, and I don't know who Selectman Goulart chose, and vice versa, just for the folks watching.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So, at this point, we have to narrow the field further. So, again, in an open meeting, we, I think we'll discuss the process. And my suggestion would be that each of us take the three candidates and kind of, I guess, prioritize them and remove the lowest one on your priority, and then forward the two remaining names to Karen, and then see where we are.
We can do like a final interview at a.
Yeah, no, it would be, our final interview would be at a, at a selectmen meeting, probably, and it will be an open meeting. And if we can get this done quickly enough, we might even be able to do that next, next week, because we need to get this process moving. Tom?
I just had one question. I'm the consultant, I believe it was the chief, Foxberry, right?
Correct.
Well, his role was, can you explain that, or is that competition?
No, no, his role was to, I mean, we're not fire people. So, his role was to come in here and kind of go over all the resumes with us, and kind of tell us what's important, what's not important, and to kind of give us a basis upon which to select the ones that we selected.
I was just wondering, in conjunction with the advertisement, there was no mention of any kind of college degrees. Now, I didn't know if that guy interjected, just to add minimum on the social.
You don't just look at one thing, you look at the whole package, and we had.
There were, there were no requirements, meaning they didn't have to have a bachelor's degree. We had applicants who did not have a bachelor's degree, and they were, you know, they were based in totality the conclusions we came to individually.
My main interest is the process, basically.
Oh, absolutely. Can I elaborate on that?
Yeah, I just want to tell you. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just so you know, the reason why we chose Chief Nord to help us is because, A, Selectman Goulart and I had had discussions with him, just in general, about government and his experience as a fire chief, and we knew that he had helped many other towns previously select their fire chiefs. So, he had objective criteria that he used every time that he has done a selection process, and so we relied on his experience and his expertise, and the fact that he's been in the selection process, and he's been a quite successful fire chief as well.
And he didn't know anyone who applied. Of all the applications that came in, because he got to see them all, he didn't know any of them. That was a plus.
If you do have a consultant, it's good to keep that.
It was very.
Then he's neutral.
It was very objective in that.
And I guess consultant is the appropriate word. We've paid this man nothing.
Yeah.
Brett and I met him at an MMA meeting. It had nothing to do with personnel or anything. We were at a selectmen's meeting, and they had made a presentation that really dealt with emergency management. And then after it, that we, you know, you break up, and you're just chit and tat, and talking about your town and whatever. And we thought of him when we were looking for, if you will, a neutral party.
I'll give you an example. In Rhode Island, they have a pool of people that volunteer to come in, they call them up, put them together, and they're neutral, they're, you know, they're not, they don't owe any money, and they don't charge any money. It's part of like, whatever they call Rhode Island's MMA, they're all weakest cities in town.
Okay.
That's all I got.
The other thing I'll tell you, too, is it was kind of amazing. We had five candidates that were very, very, very different, very different, all from different kind of backgrounds and stuff. So, it was a very interesting process, but, so anyways, we hope to nail that down and get a, get a new fire chief on board as soon as possible. Okay. Appointment of Bristol Plymouth Regional School Committee member. Sergeant Ed Dutra used to be the member from Dayton on that school committee. And he's, as everybody knows, he's retired, and he's moving to Florida, and we'll miss him dearly. I know the chief will. But, so anyway, so we have, we have to appoint someone. The process is that we'll, we'll make an appointment from here, and then it goes over to Bristol Plymouth, and they make the final appointment. So, we have a candidate, Michael Ramos, who is the only candidate that we got any, we had any interest in this, so.
And it was advertised.
It was, it was advertised, yeah. Everything is advertised, so we're not just, we didn't find this guy out of nowhere. But anyways, but he comes highly recommended. Ed recommended him. He has a very good cover letter here, and so we're going to entertain a motion to nominate him.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Michael Ramos to the Bristol Plymouth Regional School Committee member, as a, to the, as a Bristol Plymouth Regional School Committee member. It's been a long day, I apologize.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let me just look at this real quick. That's it, okay. Home favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. Congratulations, Michael. We appreciate your volunteering for this, and.
Big shoes to fill, though.
Yeah.
Oops, I should say.
Yeah, we have to tell you what the, all the collateral duties are when you're working over there. Okay, I'll sign that later, if you guys want to sign. Request for additional applicants for the Dayton Rehoboth School Study Committee. We met with Dr. Azar, actually, several months ago, and he suggested and requested that we put together a school.
Building study committee.
Building study committee to look at the Dayton side of things, to look at the elementary school, the middle school, and kind of come up with some recommendations about what Dayton needs to do in order to meet the growing population in Dayton. So, we're trying to get a, we're all, we're okay for right now, as far as the population in the school, and they have enough space and all that, but we're trying to be proactive and get something so that we can plan to the future, so we're not.
Confronting a crisis.
Sitting here one day saying, "Oh, we need more classrooms, and we have no way to get them." So, what we're doing, we're looking for volunteers to work on this committee. And the kind of person I think that would be, be good for this committee, someone who maybe has some planning background, some financial background, somebody that can analytically look at the data and help us gather data, so that we can move forward. And so, I would, we would ask for volunteers, but also, if you know somebody who you think might be a good candidate to do this, let us know, or let them know, because it's a good, it could be a very, in my mind, a very rewarding study committee, because it really will have some significant impact on the future of our school systems.
And when Selectment Taylor and I met with Dr. Azar a week ago, it came up again briefly, and we talked about the possibility of having a finance committee member, a school committee member, the capital outlay committee, all being represented, so that if you volunteer, you're not going to be, let me say, left without resources. There will be, possibly, people from other committees that are currently, people that are currently holding positions, that will help work through this whole situation and bring different expertise when it comes to discussing different areas. So, it's important that people step up for this.
Oh, absolutely. I totally agree.
Okay.
Is there a, you know, the population of the current student body and what the recent projected road breaks are?
Well, that's part of, we know that, we know the population of the current student body, but one of the tasks of this group would be to project what the population will be going forward, because as everybody knows, we've got tremendous growth going on in Dayton, and we just need to prepare ourselves for it, so.
Serpent.
Are you volunteering? Come on.
Serpent helped us prepare some population statistics, and they did do some projections. As I understand, they were waiting for the most recent census data. They were using census data from 2010, which was like the last complete thorough census that was taken. So, they will provide those things to the Board of Selectmen, and we will give that to the committee, so that they're making a decision based on actual numbers, not just what they think, which is valid, sometimes you can't predict anything, but, you know, actually letting the data drive the conclusion, because it's a big decision, either way, that needs to be made, so.
And the reason why we need local people goes, because even the data that they'll give us is based on their assumptions, and we need to make sure it's based on things we know about our communities.
And also, the, the school department has, last time I knew, membership in NESDEC, the New England School Development Education Council. And they do statistical studies, and they usually predict five years out in a row, and a number of times when we've had building projects in our towns, when we were Union Region, that agency would be able to give them data, so that, as my colleague said, there will be Serpent, which is in Totten, but will also, the committee will also have access to this other, and other agencies, including the Department of Ed, that will help with studies and providing information also.
And I think the hope is also, you know, to bring it back to Dayton, would be to comprise the data that Selectman Goulart's referring to, the data that Serpent already gave us, and kind of consolidate that with like building permit data, and then, you know, maybe they'll take a step back and look at, over the last couple of years, you know, have the building permit numbers been going up, and kind of comprise that with all the other data, and, you know, they'll come to their, their decision.
The thing is, we have land.
Absolutely.
It should be a very interesting committee, so they'll, people will step up. Okay, let's move on. The status of the town administrator. So, here's where we are with the town administrator. We got an email this week from the consultant we're using, and they have, the, the applications have closed. They have identified several that they think are good candidates. They sent an essay question out to all of those candidates. They've responded to them with the essay. We don't know what the essay was, was asking for, but it's their opportunity to see how they, how they write, you know, how they can present, written, their correspondence. And so, at this point, they reviewed the essays, they're doing phone interviews this week and next, and then they're asking us to set some time, either the week of the ninth, the sixteenth, or the twenty-third, so that we can schedule the interviews. And what their process would like to be is, they're going to hold interview, they'll do interviews of these candidates in the morning, or earlier in the day, and then we will probably do it at night. And the idea would be to try and get it all done in one day, because some of these candidates are, from what I understand, could be from out of state, and have quite a ways to travel, so we're not coming back twice, so. So, I guess what we need to do is decide what dates we want to give them.
I think, this is just my personal opinion, I think the ninth might be a little too early. My suggestion would be, let's finish selecting a permanent fire chief, since we're basically at the finish line there. We just have to do the final interview and select the last two.
What are the other dates they offered?
Ten sixteen and ten twenty-three.
It's not, it's not those days, it's those weeks.
Oh, that week.
Take any day, pick any day in those weeks.
I'd just like to give us maybe an extra week to just finish the fire chief selection, and then, but it's whatever.
Well, just if you read, if you read the email that they sent us, they've already lost a couple of candidates to, because it's very competitive right now. A lot of smaller towns are hiring town administrators, so they lost a couple of people already to other recruitment.
Are we going to get summaries or information about the individuals?
Yes.
That they, because we haven't seen.
No. We'll get, we'll get that before, before that process. As soon as they, I believe as soon as they finish doing their telephone interviews, we'll get, we'll start to get some information about them.
Do you think we can get the final two fire chief candidates to interview at next week's Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Because once that's finished, then the next week, we could start the town administrator.
Which would be, that would be, that would be, that'd be the week of the ninth.
Correct. So, next week is the week of the second, so.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
I think we can do the ninth.
So, what?
What does Selectman Goulart think?
Yeah, I think we can do it.
So, Monday's, Monday's a holiday, that's Columbus Day, and then, so we could do Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday.
They're all the same to me.
Okay.
Evening meetings anyhow. They're evening meetings anyhow.
Right.
Exactly.
So, you want to, you want me to tell them any one of those, those three days?
Yeah, see, see, see what he can get for availability.
Right. Yeah, he'll have to get back to them. He, what he's asking us to block off some days, so that when they can talk to the candidates and say about these days, so. So, I guess the same would hold true for the, for the next two weeks also.
Yeah.
Unless we have something, but I don't think we do. We just won't do it on Wednesday, because that would be.
Okay, that's, that's perfect.
Okay, okay. So, I'll get back to him and tell him Thomas.
Because you know what they could do? They could, if we're going to do that next week, they could set up the ones who are more local to where Dayton is, and then start planning, you know, let the other faraway candidates, if there are any, so they can.
Well, what he, what he told me, he wanted, they wanted to do, they'll probably have maybe three candidates, four candidates, they wanted to do their interviews in the morning, and then pass them on to us.
That's perfect.
At that night. So, everybody will be here the same day, and won't have to bring people back and forth, so. Okay? So, that, I will.
That's great.
I'll get back to them.
Good work.
You know, when you look at the MMA bulletin that comes out every month, every month there's new pictures of new administrators. Either people retired or new hires.
My, my neighbor actually was just selected as Easton's permanent. My, my neighbor actually was just selected as Easton's permanent town administrator. Congratulations, if you're watching, Connor, but I doubt you are.
I suspect what's happening is small towns are realizing that, you know, you need a professional administrator to run your town. It's, it's just too much going on, there's too much, too many things to know. Selectmen can't be the experts, because that's not our background.
And, and they're a very mobile group of individuals.
Transient, if you will.
Okay, so, and again, that will be done in open meeting.
Yep.
So, we'll let you know when, when that's gonna be. And, yeah, it'd be good for people to come and watch and see how it goes. Okay, let's go on to new business. Drainage problems at the corner of Williams Street and Main Street. I think that's, Mr., why don't you give us your name and address and we know who you are.
Tony Rodrick, as you all know, twenty-eight thirty-five County Street in Dayton. I came tonight to address this board, what an ongoing problem that I have on a piece of property that I bought on the corner of William and Main Street. I've been to Mr. Ferry four times. We have an excessive amount of water going into this property from the street. There was a pipe that he told me was to drain the field and it was actually adding water to the field. So, we blocked the, the pipe off. We've still got the problem. I've got more water now than I ever had coming into the property. I offered Mr. Ferry a resolution probably to the problem. If we put a catch basin in the corner of Main and William, I offered to purchase a precast catch basin with a top and a box and a grate, if he would install it. And the first two times, all I got was, I'll look into it. Now, he comes back to me and tells me he wants me to install it. This is a public road. This is not a subdivision road, a road that I put in. This is a town road. The road is in deplorable condition. Fifteen years ago, when I worked for the water department in this town, they were told that that main had to be replaced. They have approximately twenty-five to thirty patches on Main Street. Mr. Ferry, Mr. Ferry tells me.
Patches for what? For?
Water main breaks.
Okay, we're not talking about water main break here?
No.
Okay, that's what I mean, should we?
I'm just talking about surface water that comes from rainstorms or snowstorms.
Okay.
Like I said, fifteen years ago, when I worked for the water department, they were told that that main had to be replaced. I mean, how long are we gonna wait before Main Street gets some attention? It needs to be resurfaced. But he, he doesn't want to resurface it because of all these water main breaks. Well, something has to be done before, you know, someone has damage to their car or a pedestrian, someone on a bicycle.
I think we're on a different to, are we, what are we talking about, the drainage problem or the condition of Main Street?
Collaborating on the condition of Main Street.
I think what you're saying is, it would be probably not the best idea to fix the road right now because of the breakage. And so that would affect, so I, I, I get what you're saying. You're saying fix the breakage and then the road.
I'd just like to alleviate the problem of water coming into the property. I'm trying to restore that field, to bring it back to an agricultural field.
Now, what field are you talking about?
The one right behind the barn. The barn on the corner that I'm rebuilding?
Yeah.
Right behind that.
The house lots behind it.
No, that's up further on Main Street. That's up further on Main.
Okay.
This is there at the corner of Main.
Where's the water coming from? Main Street or William Street on both streets?
Intersection. It's coming from both ways.
But, all right, so.
Mostly it's coming off Main Street because there's a hill there.
Is it, is it a constant flow or is it raining?
Raining.
All right, so when it rains, the water drains into the field?
Yeah.
And then, it drains from William Street into the field too?
At that intersection, yes. That's where I, I propose to, to the catch basin. At my cost. I'd buy the catch basin.
On William Street?
At the corner of William and Main. I'll buy the catch basin. I'll buy the top for that catch basin. It's a, it's a precast catch basin. They're, they're not hard to install. It's got a deep sump that would collect a lot of debris from an intersection like that. It has a four-foot sump.
I guess I'm trying to get, understand the water flow because, okay, so, I know where the building is, the one you're rehabbing there. Right behind it is a.
Field.
Very, very small field.
It's about an acre and a half.
But isn't there another house going in there?
No.
Okay.
Not right now.
Okay. Let me, let me ask this. Before you started rehabbing that building, the problem existed already, didn't it?
Oh, yeah. It was there. And I was, I couldn't figure out where it was coming from until we, we started monitoring it.
So it just come, it just run off?
Yep.
Into the, okay. I think we need to hear from Mr. Ferry.
I got a, I got a question. When the, so it's rainwater that's, that's running, if this is the, this is your building and this is, make it, this is Main and this is Williams and your building's over here. So the water runs here and the water runs here. When we had a dry spell, did the problem dry up or did it?
Considerably.
Okay.
How many houses are they building though, right behind it? So it's a very small area we're talking about, huh?
Oh, drains into that field, that's all I can tell you. Right behind the building.
Okay. I, I see, just, when I, when you say a field, I see a field with grass or hay or something on it, but it's.
Years ago, it was.
Okay.
When, when the cameras on it, it was.
Okay.
It was a plantable field back then.
Probably that old area there with the hous- with the houses, all right? Okay.
I'm offering to buy, you know, the material, other than the pipe. It's not a hard fix.
Will the catch basin be on town property or your property?
Town property.
Tom, what has, what have you got to say about the situation?
Yes, Mr. Rodrick's correct. That problem's been there many years before I was even on, how it's modeled. Both, as I explained to Mr. Rodrick, both them streets were designed with country drainage. Everybody gets some, it's not directed in any direction. The pipe is referring to that block. He's not correct. It was draining that corner. It didn't drain the whole field. It drained that corner. The pipe is still there, going to manhole, it's an intersection catching the stuff that's just up the street. So not, not all of Main Street's going into that corner. These, these are catch basins up there, a little bit. A catch basin could be useful there, but my dilemma is just me putting in catch basin because you bought the property and setting any type of precedent with any other developer.
Mr. Ferry, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to understand. What you're saying is, the idea is okay, but as a town employee, you wouldn't want to install it on someone's private property? I just, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I believe you recommend it's on town property. I don't know, the street. Right. The, the catch basin would be put on the street? Would be put on the corner of Main or William? We were already draining that corner. He's changing a little bit of the flow, the way he's filling the property.
Would that affect stormwater or anything like that?
Yes, this is what we're talking about.
This is stormwater?
Yes.
So I guess, you know, and I appreciate the problem, but it's not a new situation. So, should the town, in a case like this, when you brought the property, you knew what, you knew the situation.
I didn't know where the water was coming from. I know where the water's coming from now.
Yeah. But I guess it's, but it's not, it's not, nothing's changed. We didn't, we didn't do anything to cause the water to, to come in there. It'd always been coming in there as like Tom said, what do you call it? Country drainage or?
Country drainage, yeah.
Country drainage. So I guess the concern I would have, and I'll let other people speak, is that we can't be in a position where every time somebody buys a piece of property and they don't like the drainage after they, after they purchase it, that the town has to go in and fix it. You know, the town has a regular maintenance and a regular improvement of streets and stuff. But I'd be concerned that just, you know, because somebody, and I'm not singling you out, but just anybody, buys a piece of property and they say, oh, I don't like the way this drainage is and I didn't, and I didn't know about it beforehand, that then the town's gotta come in and fix it. I guess that's my.
The only thing I can tell you is you can't direct water into anyone else's property.
Right, that's right.
That's a town street. Town's directing water into my property.
I don't think it's directed.
I think what Mr. Ferry said though is that it wasn't in any particular direction, correct? It was not like directed to someone's property.
And it was, and it was coming on the property before you bought it, so, so it's not, like, it's nothing new.
Yeah, but I'm offering to, I'm offering to pay for the biggest part of the expense of putting this in. If I was younger, I'd put it in myself, but I'm, you know, seventy years old and I'm not physically able to do it.
Sure, yeah.
You know, so I, I'll buy all the material, as long as Mr. Ferry can supply, you know, the manpower to put it in.
I got a question. You talked about a pipe and you said you blocked it up.
Yep.
Where, where, if the pipe is blocked, where is the flow going from the pipe?
Nowhere.
It goes, it heads to the north and then it crosses William Street.
On the surface or under?
Under.
Under the road.
Okay. What would the new catch basin be connected to if it were installed?
Either the existing pipe or a new pipe a little higher. Probably a new pipe higher so we can enjoy a deeper sump.
And that, that pipe would go south on Williams?
It would go to the north. If the existing pipe goes to the north, that's where the new pipe would need to go. There's a manhole beneath the section now, receiving the water that's draining both sides of Main Street above. But that, that system was designed for surface water. For some reason, in winter time, there's a slow melt and it hopefully made icing problem. It wasn't designed for storm, storm surge.
Is there an icing problem there, would you?
Correctly, depending on the type of thaw, up close to the cemetery, further, further up they go.
And it runs towards Williams?
And starts with Williams, yes.
Did the sto- the new stone wall have any effect on the flow of water on Main Street?
Hasn't been up that long.
What was the question?
Uh, there's a beautiful stone wall along the new halls and I was wondering if that was directing any additional water.
Oh, because.
Anything, it's alleviating it.
Right, that's what I would think. So your problem solved.
No, it isn't. I still got the problem at the corner. I still have the problem at the corner. When you've got water directed from both streets into that corner.
Well, they're not direct, I, I don't, I don't like the word directed because of.
Oh, it is.
Well.
I don't care how you look at it, it's still directing it.
It's flowing in that, the town's not, we didn't do anything to direct the water.
And it was already flowing in that direction.
It was already flowing in that direction.
Correct.
So, so it's, I would, I would absolutely agree with you if, you know, we did something out there, we, we did the road.
Changed something around.
Some contours so that it ran onto your property, but.
It would alleviate any problem with icing in that corner.
Yeah, but I, I don't think that's a, that's a big issue, so.
I don't know.
We had a pipe draining the corner already.
Yeah. And it was adequate? Seemed to be?
Seemed to be. It was just draining that corner, that building to the corner.
That's the pipe you talked about earlier?
Right.
I don't know if anybody has any more questions or thoughts or recommendations? I think, are you looking for a decision tonight?
Yeah. I'm sick and tired of being told, I'll look into it, you know, I'll get back to you.
In fairness, though, wait a minute, in fairness.
I'm not in fairness, you know, I, you know, I've been around, I've been in business forty-eight years in this town. Forty-eight consecutive years, matter of fact.
Okay.
And I'm gonna tell you, I address problems. When I have a problem.
Sure.
I address it.
But in all, in due respect.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate that, but Mr. Ferry addresses problems too. And I don't think, I don't think your characterization.
Well, he's not addressing this one.
Wait a minute. I don't real, I don't think your characterization of him as someone that just says, I'll look into it, I'll look into it. He has looked into it and he has a recommendation and he has a, and he has a sense. As our highway superintendent, that's his job. Now, I, I don't think anybody can come up here and just expect that this board or, or Mr. Ferry is just gonna do what someone says because they think it should be done that way. That's why we have an open being, that's why we have a discussion. So I don't like you to characterize Mr. Ferry as that.
I'm not, I'm not.
He's one of the hardest working employees we have in this town.
I gotta agree with you. I gotta agree with you.
Okay.
But I'd just like to, you know, alleviate the problem.
Sure.
And I'm not, I won't pay for half the cost of it, I'm more.
If you were to put this on your own property, would it solve the problem?
I can't catch it off the roof.
I think, okay, well, we need a, we need a motion, go one way, the other.
The only thing I would say is, we've had, I'll call them similar circumstances in town. And I know there was one that came up back in two thousand seven, eight, nine, whenever. And, and it came up more recently when I kept, when I came back to the board, so I'm familiar with it. In that particular case, it was in the Anderson Drive location, you know where I'm talking about? And the concern was that with the construction of Anderson Drive, storm water was coming down and this, this individual felt that, that road construction had caused flooding. But in looking at it, it turned out not to be the town problem, as I remember. Wasn't, wasn't there a request for drainage or something in that area? I mean, it came up more than once and it was.
Are you referring to, the resident, was actually Swansea resident, is that one you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
There's existing drainage here also.
Right. And, and, no, so not only did Dayton look into that one, but so did Swansea. And, but that was, that was, but again, it was a situation that when it rained.
Yeah. I think we should, I mean, we look at the, look at this specific situation, because everyone's gonna be different for sure, I mean.
I agree.
And, but, but as I stated earlier, I think the exist, the situation has not changed because of anything that the town did. So, the, the person who bought the property herself, you would do your due diligence to know what the prob, what the property, how the property was working and where the drainage was and where the water was coming from and stuff. So, I think I had, I have concern about someone, anyone buying a piece of property and then coming to the town and saying, you know, I got a drainage problem here, fix it. Because it, it's nothing that we did to change anything, so. That's my, that's my opinion, so.
I'm just trying to alleviate a problem for the residents of the town and pay for half the cost of it.
Anybody wanna make a motion, one way, the other?
What do you think about it?
Take your time.
Would you like more time to think about it? Would you like to?
I will say this, and I'll say it in discussion. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we deny the request of Mr. Rodrick relative to installation of a catch basin at the intersection of Main and William Streets.
Second.
Further discussion?
The thing I would say is, we gotta swear it is in town for the people that are sitting out there that, that may run into problems relative to streets or trees or things. Things that fall under the control of Mr. Ferry with whatever hat he's wearing at the time. I think we all agree, he does an excellent job. I rely on him to make decisions, because I'm not an engineer. And I have always felt that, my experience has been, that if somebody had a problem that was something the town should address, he would recommend that the town address it. So, I've got to rely on his assessment of the problem, of the circumstances and everything else, and that's why I made the motion.
I just wanted to add, I, I feel the same way. I'm not stealing your mojo, I'm sorry. But what I wanted to say is, there is a precedent, at least for me on the board. Every time Mr. Ferry has given us a recommendation, I have went along with it and it has been a good decision. So I'm going to respect his professional opinion and his recommendation.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Rodrick.
Okay, we have a, the next item is a donation of land to the Conservation Commission. I don't think we know much about this, this.
We still have some research to do.
Okay. Okay.
So, I guess we can initially announce the offer.
Right.
There is a piece of landlocked property off of Chestnut Street that has been offered to the Conservation Commission as a donation. The area is more or less five acres. Its current valuation is ten thousand dollars. Karen, did we determine if this abuts any town land? Or it's near, it was near the town forest? Is that what we were told? It's, but it's.
We don't know if it abuts.
That, so, so.
That's important.
That's part of what has to be looked at. Uh, we received a, a memo, an email asking this board to, from the, from the donor, please help me follow through on a donation of land to the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission recently voted to accept a donation of about ten acres of land off Chestnut Street. Uh, although the, again, what I'm looking at here is telling me five acres, well, we gotta get that all worked up. I think, um, I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we take this under advisement because, there's some conflicting information and we really need to talk to somebody on conservation to get more information about this. So that's my motion, we take it under advisement.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get more information and then we'll, we'll, he'll come back to the, to the board shortly. But we don't wanna make a recommendation or, on something we know, don't know enough about. Okay. Police station building contract. This is the, uh, the final contract, what we had been waiting for. On this contract was, uh, and we have it now, we have a, a performance bond from, uh, the, uh, Tower Construction will be doing the work. We also have a labor and material payment bond, uh, from the same, from Tower Construction Corporation, and we have a copy of their liability insurance with the Town of Dighton as a certificate holder. So that completes all the stuff that we needed to, to be able to do this, so. All we need now is a motion to sign this and.
I do have one question. I'll ask selectman Gulart. Does, once we sign the building contract, do we need to wait for the Police Station Building Committee to ask us for a notice to proceed? Or will we give it after we've signed the contract tonight?
The contract sets everything in motion.
Okay. 'Cause I remember.
The, the building committee doesn't have the authority to sign a contract binding the town, so that's why it's come to us.
Okay.
And if they had any problems, they would've told us before tonight.
This has been reviewed by everybody.
Absolutely, but I guess my question specifically was, I know Chairman McGee, even though this would set it into motion, I know he will, he will wait for a notice to proceed, because he's done that before, so will we?
He would get notified that the board voted to sign the contract.
That is the notice to proceed.
Signed it at the meeting tonight.
There's not another document, I guess was my question. Okay.
Uh-oh, now I gotta find the signature page. There, this right there. Okay, I guess we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to sign the, uh, Police Station Building Contract as presented to the board.
You don't, no, we need more than that. What, a friendly amendment?
Okay.
That's a friendly amendment.
Karen, include, um, where he said to sign the contract for the Police Station Communications Building with Tower Construction Corporation of Creston, Rhode Island, and the total, total of, do we have that here?
Yes, there's one.
Well, insert four million, five hundred thirteen thousand dollars, four comma, five, one, three, comma, zero, 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 in our second motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I just wanna note that they were determined to be a little bitter also. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We got, we have three copies of this to sign, but we will sign this one right now. Pardon me? Not yet. As soon as they, as soon as Tower gets this, then they'll put together their schedule.
But as I understand, they presented, uh, the Police Station Building Committee the presentation at last year's, um, special town meeting, and they, at that time, said, I think their hopeful, uh, completion date was December of twenty eighteen, they would be in there.
Might be sooner.
Yeah, I think they're still on track, so that would, I guess, still be their target date.
Yeah, once we, they put those documents together, then we'll share that with everybody, but, uh, don't wanna, don't wanna tell them they gotta do something before they can do it.
Are these the other copies?
No, the other copies are on this.
Oh, okay, alright.
And I don't think, there's no signature required on these. This is the, these are, uh, AIA documents. And this really just lays out all the, uh, conditions and, these are pretty standard documents. But there's no signature on this one, this, that's the one that, that counts.
We're gonna make sure we sign all the copies, 'cause I'm not gonna be here tomorrow, I got that meeting. Alright, before we leave tonight, okay?
Okay.
This is assigned and I'll keep the unsigned.
Okay, we have a request here from, uh, prime time to reduce hours of a senior aide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Will you read it?
Sure, I'll read it. This is dated September twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, to the Board of Selectmen, from Alice Souza, who is the Executive Director of the Dighton Council on Aging. Please be advised that after receiving notification from Citizens for Citizens that Carol Barrow, Barrowby will no longer be eligible for their program. Her last day as a senior aide will be October sixth, therefore she will no longer be a senior aide. This leaves a vacancy every day for someone to do our lunch and snack dishes. In speaking to Carol, she has agreed, if it's okay, to work as our employee from eleven forty-five AM to two PM, Monday through Friday. This is a non-union position. Should you have any questions or need any additional information, please feel free to contact me at the aforementioned telephone number. Sincerely, Alice Souza.
So Tom, you're the chairman of that board, I think you're familiar with this. Was this person being paid out of, out of funds other than town funds?
It sounds like Citizens for Citizens.
Citizens for Citizens.
It was a grant position, wasn't it?
Are you asking how she's gonna be paid?
No, I'm asking she was, was she being paid out of, from Citizens to Citizens? Okay, so that grant is up. So there's no more funding for that position, but they have a, another spot for it, I got it. Okay. Motion? Anybody?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the request of, uh, Alice Souza that Carol Barrowby be assigned to the new position, uh, as outlined by the Director of the Program.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Alice.
Yes, thank you, Alice. Anytime. Okay, we have a one-day liquor license request from the Dighton Lions Club. I believe this, I know this liquor license is, uh, for the, uh, art festival that which, which will take place on November fifth. So, I'm gonna recuse myself from participating in this, 'cause I am a member of the Lions Club and I'm involved in the art festival.
Uh, I, I move that the board grant a waiver of a license for the one-day all alcohol or beer and wine license requested by the Dighton Lions Club for the annual arts festival, November fifth, at Arugio Farm.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, that motion passes.
Extension? One. You need to abstain from voting.
Oh, I'm sorry, abstain, abstain, yeah.
I thought you said extension, I'm sorry.
What am I doing?
Are you calling me?
Now I'm gonna put a plug in for this. This is a, the annual event put on by the Dighton Lions Club, it's at Arugio Farm. It is a wonderful craft fair, uh, and there is so much demand for people to participate in this. Currently, we have about fifteen vendors that we're trying to find space for, so there's, there's a total of probably almost eighty vendors that come down. And some of the stuff is really, really nice stuff, so. I hope everybody will remember, will remind you again before, before that, but, uh, mark your calendar, it's a great, great event.
It's a great family event. Uh, schoolchildren will perform, I believe.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And there will be, um, art projects from the Dighton, and in the past, I think we're gonna see the Rehoboth Elementary grade level with their art, uh, displayed, and also the, some of the pre-school kindergarten programs that are in Dighton. They set up, uh, scenes, fall scenes are themes, and, um, it's really worth seeing. And actually, this can be a no-cost event, family day, you only spend money if you choose to spend it, but there are things you can do and participate in that won't cost you any money.
And the Lions Club will be selling, uh, hot dogs, hamburgers, I think, clam chowder and a few other things.
And will the parking be at Mannheim with the shuttle?
Yeah, parking will be at Mannheim, there'll be a shuttle that runs frequently, so you can get back and forth, uh, as everybody can imagine is, not in a parking lot.
Don't try to get down Williams Street on the fifth.
The only people that, uh, we, we ask everybody to go to Mannheim. If you're handicapped, we ask you to, uh, come to, to Arugio's in that front parking lot. And then if you can drop the, the handicapped person off and then go down and park. 'Cause we just, even if everybody handicapped came in, we don't have enough room to park everybody, so. Your cooperation would be appreciated. The other thing I wanna say too, this is one of the Lions, uh, Dighton Lions' main events, we have this and we have the Cow Chip. Probably the two biggest ones. And, and so we, we bring in a lot of money and that, that money goes to a lot of different causes. A lot of it is spent right here in Dighton on things like, uh, we, we put swings out at the playground, we've done a, a number of things. Uh, a large number amount of it goes to, um, Lions eye research and which everybody benefits from at some point. I mean, there's so much going on at, uh, up at Mass Ionier, where we give a lot of the money to. So it's, it's not only is it a great event for people to come to, but it's a great event to, to spend your money at.
Lights on, they, they help with the, with the expenses for lights on?
So. The Lions Club's, does a lot in the community, so we hope you'll, you'll support it. Okay, and I, and I know every year it's well-supported, but if you haven't gone, please go. Okay, we have announcements. The Boston Passport Agency is hosting a passport day on Saturday, uh, September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, which I guess is this weekend. Uh, from nine AM to one PM, and I guess it's a, it's an opportunity to get a passport without an appointment.
Yep.
So, uh, where's it, where is it?
Probably in Boston.
Yep, uh, it's at the Tip O'Neill Federal Building, which is at ten Causeway Street, Suite two four seven, Boston, Mass. But we also do them in Dighton.
We do them in Dighton as well, but.
That one's right near the station, next to the Garden.
Oh, okay. I know exactly where that is.
So if you want, anybody wants more information, you can call the office here. But like Brett said, we also do the New York Town Hall as a service to our.
It's a lot closer to your house.
Okay, what other announcements do we have?
I got a couple besides the ones on the list here.
Okay, go ahead.
For those who may be interested in helping out, the Sojourn Bears Program started up again this past Monday. We made fifteen bears, and these bears, uh, are taken to the Hudnik Cancer Center at St. Anne's Hospital and given to people who are there, uh, for treatment to kinda help them along the way on their trip. We're looking for volunteers, uh, you don't need any special talent, uh, we need people to stuff the bears or sew bears or if you've got, uh, clean cloth, it can be used, we usually use cotton blends. You can just leave that, any donations of material, uh, or the, the polyester fiber fill that we use. If anyone wishes to do that, just drop that off at, uh, the office at Lincoln Village. Uh, we meet the fourth Monday of the month at ten thirty and we just go till noon time. Uh, but in that short period of time, we made fifteen bears this last time.
Wow, very good.
Um, the other thing I wanna mention is that the Lights On Committee is in need of volunteers. We still have that key female position to fill. And so, uh, anyone who's willing to help out with this year's Lights On, please get in touch with Sumideris.
Okay. Uh, trash bags, sharps, disposal containers and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Please call five zero eight six six nine six four three one for more information. There are vacancies on the Land Use Committee, Capital Outlay Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and also I was contacted today. The Cultural Council is also seeking new members as well, am I forgetting one? The School Building Study Committee as well, the big one. So if you're interested in serving your town, uh, please, please, uh, we'd be happy to receive your application. The Susan G. Komen First Annual Impact Ride will take pass through Dighton this Sunday, October first, twenty seventeen, between ten thirty AM and three PM. There will be a signing ceremony of the Community Compact Cabinet at Dighton Town Hall on Tuesday, October third, twenty seventeen, at nine AM with special guest Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito and State Representative, President Pro Tempore, Patricia Haddad.
And there will be a cake, so there's food.
And coffee.
And coffee, so. That'll entice you to come down, please come down. It's kind of a big event, I don't, I think. Someone said, I don't think we've ever had Lieutenant Governor come down here to do something like this, so it's a big deal.
No one from the executive branch that I'm aware of.
So it's a nice thing, so it'd be nice to have a, a good turnout to show our appreciation, our appreciation, uh, for her coming down.
I, I will also like to mention, uh, so I am on a, a different committee, I'm not gonna talk about it, but several candidates for governor will be coming to Dighton that same evening at Dighton Middle School at seven PM for a four candidates forum. Uh, and the last thing, uh, thank you Karen for reading the website, I was, I wrote that in, but it's here. Volunteers, I've, I've actually received several pieces of correspondence from, uh, parents who really, um, really need and want, um, support for the twenty seventeen DR Falcon season. Volunteers are needed for things like the snack shack, um, painting the lines on the field, et cetera. Um, so they, they rely on volunteerism, so please, please volunteer and support the DR Falcons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we have any, uh, I don't think we have any correspondence.
Nobody, why is no one corresponding with us? We're a public board.
Reports, we were at the meeting in Rehoboth.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh my god. Feels like ages ago. It was just Monday.
You wanna report, I'm gonna.
Um, we met with the Rehoboth Selectmen for our, our belated quarterly meeting. And, uh, some of the talk, topics we talked about were the, uh, the study that was done by the RAC Committee. Uh, Mr. Christopher Andrade from the DR School Committee was there and he advised us that they're looking into. Oh, excuse me, that the RAC Committee. The regional, the regional agreement, well, it lasted so long, they kinda felt that way. The Regional Agreement Committee, this was the committee that was appointed to study the existing committee and recommend updates to it. It, they reached a, they reached an end, but they didn't reach a final conclusion, so, um, the Rehoboth Selectmen would like to also have a parallel committee, meaning that the DR School Committee looked at the work that the RAC did and, I won't say they're gonna pick up where they left off, but, but they are looking at it. The Rehoboth Selectmen would like a parallel committee, uh, to be formed by Dighton and Rehoboth residents to look at deregionalizing ga, grades pre-K through eight, which means we would return to the structure we had prior to full regionalization, so that we would have local school committees and local school budgets. And the school departments would return to the towns where the schools are located, that only the regional high school, nine to twelve, would be a full region. So they're looking to determine, in the case of Rehoboth, uh, what the cost would be, uh, what the downside is, if there is an upside, um, so that's all the things they're looking at. Um, Rehoboth, uh, as, as my colleague said, Lieutenant Governor Polito is coming on Tuesday to sign the Community Compact Agreement. And I did mention this at the Rehoboth's meeting, because Rehoboth has already, uh, achieved that designation. And one of the things that we feel will be a, a, I'll call it a double blessing for the regional school district is that once we get our designation, both member towns will have this, and it should be a plus for the regional district if they should apply for grant money, because if it's competitive, uh, grant money, the points are awarded if your community belongs to the compact. So hopefully, that's not only gonna benefit this town, but it's gonna benefit the regional district. And I did ask the Rehoboth Selectmen if it has been beneficial to have that designation, and they said, yes, they have, uh, achieved, um, they have, they have applied grant money that having that designation brought to town, so. money that having that designation brought to town, so, soon as we get our designation, there are a few things we're gonna look at.
And I think, you know, as, as Nancy said, the, uh, the school committee is, is looking at, uh, that regional agreement, and they're gonna come up with their ideas and stuff, and they're gonna share them with us. Um, I don't think, personally, I don't think we wanna, you know, do double work here.
I agree.
But, so I think, I, my inclination would be to wait to see what they have, and then we can add to that, or, or do some more research, or whatever, and then talk to Rehoboth about what the final outcome might be. Okay? Okay, I guess we got minutes to approve and warrants to approve.
No, we don't have the last two sentences. This draft, we're just still in...
Oh, okay.
What, C and D?
Is August 4th still in draft form, too?
The first two are off.
Okay.
What I mean is, there's an August 4th set of minutes that I sent over from a meeting we had with the Harler Master. Okay.
Yeah, let's deal with these, and, you wanna, you gonna do the minute thing?
Yep. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 9th, 2017, and the minutes of the executive session meeting of August 12th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Discussion, August 12th. Uh, Karen, did you get the minutes that I dropped, had my husband drop in the mailbox? That was the, that was the set of minutes when Jack was away, and Brett and I had a meeting to rescind the, um, sidewalk project.
I did get them.
All right, but that's, this isn't one of them?
No.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you. Okay, okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor?
I don't have August 13th.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Warrants?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant 13A-18 in the amount of $88,000, $90.85 payroll. Warrant 13B-18 in the amount of $21,433.95. Warrant 13C-18 in the amount of $283,657.79, and warrant 13D-18 in the amount of $471.92, the last three, all being accounts payable, be approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any more public input?
I can wait a minute. Did you get a chance to read the letter I got from? The letter intent?
When was that?
Uh, last week.
Intent for what?
Uh, for the Mass Department for Building Development.
Yeah, I saw it.
Was that the TIF?
Yeah, it's going around.
It's going around, okay, yeah, we haven't, we...
I haven't seen it yet.
All right, you may have a time to share it from that.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we get it.
She was very adamant that I sent, had that stamped and sent it to her.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll make a point to get it, and then we'll...
And she's also wants to come down and meet with you guys.
Yeah, I remember that, okay. Let us get that out, and, uh, make sure everybody's read it, and then we'll discuss it at our next meeting.
All right, I asked, I emailed her, and she had forwarded to me, to you guys.
Okay, yeah, that would be good.
You already have it.
Oh, we have it, okay.
You didn't tell all three of you.
I have the emails.
Remember, we see it.
I sent it to Carol.
Okay, okay.
We could avoid you.
Okay, let us get it, get our stuff together on that, and we'll...
All right.
Put it on the agenda next, next meeting.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just saw this, it's very short, um, on the YouTube, is there some kind of problem with, like, somebody mentioned?
There was an issue, there was an issue with one of the recorders, um, so, uh, we're able to get, uh, the other committees' meetings, like zoning board, planning board, but the specific recorder that's used to record in this room, um, is not compatible with my MacBook. So, when they make a copy, um, it, it will work on a PC, for example, like a Dell, for example, but it, it wasn't working on my MacBook, so, um, we worked actually before this meeting to fix that problem, um, and Dave and the Cable Committee did a great job, and we figured it out. So, we're good to go, they'll be uploaded tonight.
Someone had mentioned it to me, I didn't have it.
Yeah, they mentioned it to me, too. We're not hiding anything.
The translation, the translation there is that Brett's got a problem with Mac, with Macs, and everybody else uses a PC, but that's okay.
It's like the I2 guy, in a sense, but I also write, uh, how do you scan the minutes into the system, so they're on the...
Why don't we talk that offline, that's really not a part of this meeting, but...
I know you wanna get out of here.
How many, do we know how many meetings didn't make, either YouTube?
We do. Nothing since July 26th.
Are they all gonna be there eventually?
They are, yeah, we figured it out today. Um, Dave, I sat, I came a little early and sat with Dave, and we figured it out, so we will get them on there tonight, I have them all on my USB.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Just, just for the benefit of what you said about, uh, tonight, from 5:30 to 6:30?
You don't have it, did?
No. From 5:30 to 6:30, I was at a, um, a security and, and cybersecurity meeting tonight at Baycoast Bank down in Swansea, and the whole thing dealt with, with cybersecurity. And somebody in the audience at the question opportunity said, "Well, what about my Mac?" And the answer to the question was, "No, you can't do that with a Mac." And really, everything that we're dealing with cybersecurity-wise is because roughly 85% of the world's, I'll call it, population that uses, uh, PCs, everything is Windows based, and so, they don't focus a lot on the remaining percentage, but, but that, that